Good morning, everybody. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church. Thank you all for coming this morning for this information session about the referendum that is planned November 5th on the sale of the water system. If I could, Vice Mayor Snyder is here and I'd like to invite him forward to make a few introductions or your comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Wyatt. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We know this is an issue of great importance to our citizens as well as the region, so we're really pleased that everyone is here. My name is Dave Snyder, Vice Mayor, and I'm pleased to welcome everyone on behalf of City Council. I also wanted to recognize Phil Duncan, who's a current City Council member, and we also have two former mayors with us, Jeff Tarbert and Carol DeLonge. So, thank you all for being here. We have a number of citizens, we have our legal team, and I especially want to recognize Chuck Murray, who is the manager of the Fairfax County Water Authority. This is a city-sponsored event. The objective here is to provide you with the information you need to make your decision as informed citizens at the referendum, which will be on the ballot on November 5th as part of the general election. So, again, welcome, everyone. Our objective here is to provide you with the information that you need to help you make an informed decision. We know it's very, very important, and we're very pleased for everyone that's here and everyone who will be watching this tape. So, there'll be another forum sponsored by the city as well, and we'll talk about that as we go along. Again, welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Before we get started, if I could allow Chuck Murray to come forward and introduce himself and Jeannie Bailey on the Fairfax Water staff.
Thank you, Wyatt, and thanks for inviting me. My name's Chuck Murray. I'm the general manager of Fairfax Water. I'm going to introduce you to Fairfax Water in a few minutes. Brief introduction of me. I've been in the water business for over 30 years, 10 of it here at Fairfax Water and 20 of it across the river at the Washington suburban sanitary commission, which serves Montgomery and Prince George's Counties in Maryland. And I'm especially pleased to be here today because I am a resident of the City of Falls Church and have been for the last 10 years when I moved from Silver Spring. So, I'm very familiar with the city and looking forward to being a good provider for all of the citizens of the City of Falls Church, including me and my family. So, thanks for having me.
You can keep that one for when you're on. We have a bigger audience than just the folks that are in this room, and this is a taped production. I want to thank Mike Palmrose and the folks at our public access television station for being here on this Saturday morning to tape this. This will be placed on the city webpage as well as a resource for people to learn more about the referendum question before they vote on November 5th. I have a number of slides that we'll go through. One other thing I just wanted to note, we have Amy Beator here as the city's PIO, and she has done a lot to set this event up. Thank you, Amy. And Mayor Baruch is unable to attend this morning. He is at the Northern Virginia Regional Commission at an all-day meeting that they're having there. He wanted to be here, but he couldn't be in both places at once. So, this morning, I've got about 17 slides that I'd like to go through with you all to provide an overview, first just of the city's water system, so we understand what it is that we're talking about, and I think most of the people in the room are very knowledgeable about that. So, I'll go through that briefly and then talk about the terms that we have negotiated with Fairfax Water and Fairfax County for the sale of the water system and the details about how that will be affected, assuming that the voters ultimately approve the sale. So, just a few facts about the City of Falls Church water system. It is a large water system. We're the 13th largest in the state of Virginia. We have 34,000 accounts, and we serve a population of approximately 140,000 people in the eastern part of Fairfax County and the City of Falls Church. Approximately 90% of our accounts are located in Fairfax County, and 10% of our accounts are in the City of Falls Church. We operate our water utility through an enterprise fund, so all the finances generated, revenues generated from the water system are kept separate in an enterprise fund just for water utility operations. Those annual revenues and expenditures are approximately $21 million a year to serve our customers. The water system is run by 54 employees who are dedicated to the water utility. They don't have general fund responsibilities. They're exclusively working in the water business. And we get our water, we get our treated water from the Washington Aqueduct, which is operated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers from their plant just across the river at Dale Carlia. So, this is a map of the Falls Church traditional service territory. We have the City of Falls Church located right here, and so our service territory really is from the Potomac River south. The Beltway is the western boundary until you get to the Tysons Corner, and we serve approximately half of Tysons Corner, serve Merrifield, and then Route 50 marks the southern boundary until you get down into the Seven Corners area where we're a little bit south of Route 50. The town of Vienna over here is currently a wholesale customer of the city, although they have signed an agreement to move to Fairfax Water, and ultimately, they will purchase all of their water from Fairfax Water. So, the voter referendum, why will there be a voter referendum on the sale? That is called for in the city charter. So, the charter states, "There shall be no sale or lease of the water or sanitary sewer utilities unless the proposal for such sale or lease shall first be submitted to the qualified voters of the city at a general election and be approved by a majority of all votes cast at such election." The water utility is a big part of city operations, and to make a decision about the sale or disposition of that water utility requires the votes, the approval of all the voters of the city. So, the referendum question that will be on the ballot on November 5th reads as follows: Shall the City of Falls Church sell its water system to the Fairfax County Water Authority for consideration, including payment to the city of $40 million and a boundary adjustment that will bring within the city's boundaries the George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School properties, certain city-owned properties on Gordon Road and Shreve Road, and certain other properties? And then, on the ballot will be yes or no. Our purpose in this information session today and in all of the communications from the city is not to advocate a certain position for this, but simply to inform the voters so that the voters can make a well-informed decision when they cast this vote. So, here are the key terms, and we'll go through on a number of slides the key terms of the sales agreement that has been negotiated with Fairfax Water and Fairfax County. First, it's important to understand that this is a three-way agreement with the city, Fairfax County, and Fairfax Water. The terms that we have reached were reached with the assistance of a federal mediator. Magistrate Judge Teresa Buchanan met with all three of the parties in November 2012, and through that mediation is how we arrived at the terms that have now been turned into a formal agreement and have been approved by the boards, the governing boards of the three entities, the city, the county, and Fairfax Water. So, and those terms that we reached at mediation have been consistent and have been adhered through throughout this entire process. So, those terms include a payment by Fairfax Water to the City of Falls Church of $40 million. And so, that $40 million reflects a valuation study that was conducted in 2012 by the firm of SAIC. They conducted an independent evaluation of the system and provided a range of what its fair market value is, and this price is within that range. The city will retain approximately $30 million of debt and pension obligations of the water system. So, we have debt that we issued to build our facilities, pump stations and storage tanks, and we'll retain that debt and we'll use a portion of the proceeds to put into a special account to fully fund all those debt obligations. In addition, we have pension obligations for employees who have already retired, and so we will set aside funds so that the city's general fund or the taxpayers of the city in the future will not be liable for those pension obligations in the future. Current employees of the water system, the 54 employees that I mentioned earlier, they will move to Fairfax Water and their pension will be portable, and that means that Fairfax Water will take on all the liabilities of those pension obligations as those employees go forward. With those employees will go a payment from the city's pension fund to fund on an actuarial basis what those obligations will be in the future. And undesignated cash after all bills are paid will remain with the city, and that's capped at $3 million. So, after the sale, we will have a lot of business to wrap up with the utility, but we will be able to retain $3 million in cash after all those bills are paid. A key provision in the agreement is that Fairfax Water agrees that it will have a uniform rate for all of the customers that it has, all of its retail customers. So, within two years, all of the customers that are currently served by the city will have their rates reduced to the Fairfax Water rate. Currently, there's approximately about a 30% difference between the city's water rates and Fairfax Water's rates. So, our customers will experience a 30% reduction in their water rates within two years after the sale. The city's rate is approximately $3.27 per thousand gallons, and the Fairfax Water rate is $2.29 per thousand gallons. Our water utility employees, a term in the agreement is that all of our current employees will be guaranteed a position with Fairfax Water at comparable pay and benefits. So, the people who run this system will keep their body of knowledge and experience, and that will go to Fairfax Water so that we will have continuity of operations and our customers will be well-served through this transition process. The agreement provides for a boundary adjustment. So, what that means is that the city's corporate boundaries will grow to encompass certain properties, the majority of which are already owned by the city but are not within the political control of the city. They total 38.4 acres. They include school properties and properties on Gordon Road that are used for the city's public works operations. So, more detail on the school land. The George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson campus will be brought into the city. The city already owns these properties, but the boundary will be adjusted to bring them into the city. That's a total of about 36 acres. Now, in the future, we will go through a land use planning process with the school board to determine the best configuration of that property. But as we do that, 70% of that property must be used for education-related purposes for at least 50 years. That's in the agreement. 30%, or just under 11 acres, may be used for any purpose that is determined appropriate by the city council through the land use and zoning process. So, we will do a comp plan amendment to bring, to shape the land use for this land that's being brought into the city, and a portion of it will be available for economic development that will help the city's financial condition in future years. On the Gordon Road properties, there are several city-owned parcels near the intersection of Shreve and Gordon's Road, and that's about 2.5 acres. So, on a map, this is what these look like. If you take first the school properties, this is George Mason High School, this is Mary Ellen Henderson, and this is the football field, Hancock Road and Route 7. So, the boundary, which currently runs right through the West End Shopping Center, will be moved to encompass the school campus, and that is, as I noted earlier, just over 36 acres. So, the vision is that ultimately, with the redevelopment possibly of the high school, that this campus could be compressed and a multi-story high school could be constructed. They would open up land somewhere on the campus that would be available for economic development. They would help pay for the school construction costs. On the Gordon Road area, if you were down just today for the hazardous materials collection, which any citizen now can take any materials that are in your garage and take them to the property yard so they can be properly disposed of, that's going on today until 1:00. But this property, the property yard is located in Fairfax County currently, so the boundary will be adjusted to bring that property into the city. Similarly, we will do land use planning here to meet our future public works needs, but also there's the potential for economic development, you know, throughout the whole Gordon Road area. The property yard on this side of Gordon Road, which is currently used for utility operations, in the agreement is a provision where Fairfax Water has the option to lease this warehouse and the land just around it for its utility operations for up to 10 years. And we're in discussions right now. We have a lease that's going back and forth between us to negotiate those terms. The homeless shelter, which is located on the second story of the warehouse, will remain in operation, and so that's a provision of the lease discussions that we're having with Fairfax Water, and Fairfax Water's been very cooperative with us in trying to meet that part of our public mission as well. City utility assets that will convey to Fairfax Water, essentially, this is a turnkey transaction. Everything that you need to run this water system will be conveyed to Fairfax Water. So, the water towers, water pump stations, mains, valves, hydrants, the land that's associated with all that infrastructure, the easements that control all of our water mains, our utility equipment, our backhoes, our trucks, all of that title will convey to Fairfax Water. In addition, the balance of availability fees, which are contributions paid by developers for future expansion, that balance currently is approximately $26 million, that also conveys to Fairfax Water. Those are contributions that are for the future expansion of the system. They're designated for that purpose, and therefore, it's appropriate and part of our valuation study that they would convey. It's important to note the sanitary sewer system will stay in the city's ownership, so we will remain in the sanitary sewer business. There are also synergies between the sewer business with the stormwater utility that the city council has created in the last year, and so the city will remain working with those two utilities into the future. Your sewer bill will come from Fairfax Water, and so they will collect the sewer bill and then remit it to the city. That's very similar to what we right now do for all of our customers in Fairfax County. We collect the sewer bill for Fairfax County and then remit those funds to the county. That same structure will be in place, but in reverse. Fairfax Water will provide retail water service for our customers, and so you will get a bill from Fairfax Water. Any customer service issues, you would call Fairfax Water to have those resolved, and city water utility employees will take their positions with Fairfax Water. Our target date for all this to happen, if the voters approve the referendum on November 5th, is on January 3rd, 2014. So, we've been working for months with the Fairfax Water staff to facilitate a smooth transition of billing records and employee transfers, all of the details associated with this transaction. We've been doing a lot of work so we'll have a smooth transaction, but of course, this is all contingent on voter approval. So, that's just a brief overview, and before we go into questions, let me ask Mr. Murray if he could come forward, provide an introduction to Fairfax Water.
Thanks, Wyatt.
And I will key up your slides if you want to take this.
Appreciate it. As Wyatt says, we've been working for, gosh, over nine months now on the details of this arrangement, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work with him and his staff over those many months and to work out many, many, many details on this. I introduced myself earlier. I just want to finish introducing Jeannie Bailey, our Public Affairs Officer. She's been with Fairfax Water most of her life, a brief stint with the American Waterworks Association. She's a water person. Her mother and father were water people, and she grew up in our laboratory before becoming a Public Affairs Officer. So, if you have any questions about Fairfax Water and you can't get me, Jeannie is your person. All righty. So, a little bit about Fairfax Water. Who are these, what is this organization? It was created in 1957, and it was created in 1957 by the Board of Supervisors because they had a situation that was limiting development in the county, and they tried to create their own water utility and issued bond referendums to finance it, and they failed. And so, the problem continued, and they needed a solution, and in 1957, the Water and Waste Authorities Act was passed by the General Assembly, which allowed localities to create these independent water and wastewater authorities. And so, the Board of Supervisors did that in 1957, and this is why. This is an old faded map of Fairfax County from that date in 1957, September 1957, and the index, which is completely unreadable in this slide, shows that there were 26 separate distinct water utilities in Fairfax County. And City of Falls Church, as you can see, is this area here. And so, this was a problem, and if the county was going to have orderly growth, they needed a more unified water system. And so, this mission was given to the newly-formed Fairfax County Water Authority to establish, operate, and maintain a comprehensive county-wide water system to be accomplished through the acquisition of existing systems and the construction of new facilities. So, as you can see, our mission was to consolidate 26 water utilities into one. So, who are we today in 2013? We're the largest drinking water utility in Virginia. We serve one in five Virginians on public water service. That's almost 1.7 million people. I'm going to show you the service area map, a little bigger version of it. We have two water treatment plants on two separate rivers, the Potomac and the Ocaquon. So, this is the map of the service area. You can see the Falls Church service area in white here. This is Fairfax City service area. This white area down here is the Ocaquon watershed protection area. The darker green is our retail service area, and the lighter is the wholesale services. We have wholesale service to the Loudoun County, Loudoun Water, to the Prince William Service Authority, to Fort Belvoir, City of Alexandria, Town of Herndon, Dulles Airport, and Fort Belvoir, and most recently, the town of Vienna. So, we have about 240,000 retail accounts. So, almost a million people within Fairfax County and the rest are wholesale customers. Our facilities are scattered about the county. Just to give you a general idea where they are, we have a service depot in Newington. We have a water treatment plant called the Griffith Plant on the Ocaquon. We have a service depot in Chantilly. We have a water treatment plant up near Herndon on the Potomac River, and our main offices are just up the road in Merrifield. These are the main offices. We have two buildings here. Our original headquarters was this building here. It's now our engineering department, planning and engineering, and this is our headquarters building right next door. This is the Corbless Plant. James Corbless was the first employee of Fairfax Water. He was the first general manager in 1957, and we named this plant after him. It's just outside the town of Herndon. It's about seven miles from the Potomac River. There's an intake on the Potomac River right in the middle of the Donald Trump Golf Course. If you've ever been out there, it used to be called Lowe's Island, and water's pumped from there all the way up to this facility. It's 175 million gallons a day, and it has conventional treatment followed by ozonation and granular activated carbon filtration. So, it's an advanced treatment plant. The Griffith Plant, Fred Griffith, who lives just up the road here, just outside off of Shreve Road, was our second general manager, and this plant was named after him, and it has the same treatment technology. If you drive down Route 123 just before you get to the Ocaquon River Bridge, 123 is over here, this is the plant on the right-hand side. Opened in 2006 to replace three older facilities that haven't been down there since the early 50s, and the architecture is modeled after the prison on the other side of the street, which is now the art center. Our maintenance facilities, this is the Newington Facility that I pointed out just off I-95. This is our Chantilly Facility, just off of Route 50 and out near Route 28. So, Wyatt went through the details of the agreement, so I really don't have to say a whole lot about this. The most interesting thing from my perspective is that we will be acquiring an additional source, that is, the water supplied from the Washington Aqueduct. And I want to talk a little bit more about that in a second. That's important for Northern Virginia. So, what are the benefits for Northern Virginia? Well, first of all, Wyatt talked about the city employees. We are excited about bringing these people into the Fairfax Water family of employees. We've sat down with each and every one of them. We've talked to them about where they're going to fit into the organization, how their pay and their benefits are going to be comparable to what they get now, and what are the opportunities for growth for them in the future. These are good people, and we're very excited about bringing them into the organization. Rate reduction equalization within two years, that's very closely linked to the third benefit there, the economies of scale. But as everybody knows, the basis for the dispute that's been ongoing for many years is this differential between the rates, and so getting these rates equalized across Northern Virginia, I think, will be a great benefit to all, and that'll be possible because of these economies of scale. So, the water business is very capital-intensive. Fairfax Water owns about $2 billion worth of capital in and on the ground. The larger the system, generally speaking, the more economical it is and more efficient it can be run because of those economies. For example, in the city's capital budget for the water system, we were able to identify almost $50 million worth of projects that could either be deferred or altered in some way if we could combine these two water systems. And many of these became more and more important, especially in the growth areas of the county, Tysons and Merrifield, where these two water systems were intersecting, and it's important for future growth to have a good unified, solid water system under these new growth areas. And then, back to this, three sources of supply. It's important for Falls Church's customers, but also for our customers. I think this combined system will be one of the most resilient and robust systems in the country. You'll have a source of supply from the Corbless Plant, you have a source of supply from the Ocaquon River, and then you'll have this third source, which goes across the Potomac River at Little Falls from the Washington Aqueduct. I think this is a great benefit to the region, and as we unify these systems, it'll become more and more robust and more resilient to disruption, so we're excited about that. I just want to spend a minute talking about how the regional water utilities work together, and it's important that they do that because we share this tremendous resource called the Potomac Watershed. The Potomac Watershed upstream of the Washington metropolitan area is 12,000 square miles of land, which drains all of these tributaries that come together into the Potomac River and into the Chesapeake Bay. It's a tremendous raw water resource, but it's not unlimited, and as a result, the regional water utilities have had to cooperate to plan for drought periods, and this cooperation is very important as we go into the future and try to accommodate increased demands regionally. So, this is a map of the Potomac Watershed, and you can see the various water utility service areas. You see Falls Church- You see Falls Church here in Green, and Arlington County, Fairfax Water, the WSSC, and the Washington Aqueduct Service in the District of Columbia. All of these three utilities, the Aqueduct, Fairfax Water, and WSSC, in 1982, signed an agreement called the Water Supply Coordination Agreement. And under that agreement, we agreed to share these resources of three rivers, the Potuxent, the Potomac, and the Okaquan, and to build and maintain the necessary reservoirs and other facilities to provide for future development. And every three years, I'm sorry, every five years, under this agreement, these three water utilities cooperate on a projection, a 20-year projection of demand and supply in order to ensure that we will be able to serve the region over the next 20 years. The last one of those was done in 2010, and it indicated that we should have adequate supply through the year 2040. A big wild card in that, of course, is climate change. And we continue to evaluate the impacts of climate change. And it appears that it's possible, with increased evaporotranspiration, that that date, 2040, could be moved up to about 2035. And we're doing additional planning to provide resources with that in mind. So, what do we have in terms of raw water resources for the region now? We have the Okaquan Reservoir. Just upstream of that bridge I was talking about going over the Okaquan is a high dam which holds back the Okaquan Reservoir. We have, on the Potuxent, two dams the WSSC operates. In the middle of Montgomery County is Lake Seneca. And then, 220-some miles upstream, there are two reservoirs, Jennings Randolph and the Savage Reservoir. And all of these are used cooperatively and coordinated through a section of the Interstate Commission on the Potomac River Basin that manages the releases of water from these reservoirs during drought to make sure that all of us have adequate resources. And they will direct us which plants to increase or decrease during drought so that we can maximize the efficiency of the use of those water resources. Just a little bit about customer service. So, if this referendum is approved and closing occurs on January 3rd, you'll become customers of Fairfax Water on January 3rd. And we're working hard to make that transmission, that transition as smooth as possible. We want to make it invisible. So, each customer would receive an information package, "Welcome to Fairfax Water," as a new customer. It'll outline how our billing systems work. Really, there's going to be very little change. We, it's not all that complicated. We are committed to providing a high-level service. Our customers enjoy a high-level service now. As I said earlier, I'm a city resident, will be a customer of the organization that I head, and I assure you, I'll be doing my best to make sure I get good service. And that we will be maintaining a payment box here at the city for those who prefer that option. We got a question at an earlier meeting about direct debit. So, we will transfer that to Fairfax Water for those who want to continue with direct debit. But you will have a chance to opt out if you want to. And so, that's a brief introduction into who Fairfax Water is. And we, as I said earlier, hope to make this transition absolutely transparent to folks. And we look forward to serving all the citizens and customers of the City Falls Church if the referendum is approved. So, once again, thanks for having me today, and I think we'll be more than happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chuck. So, this is your time to ask questions of us. We do have a pretty small group here. This obviously is going to be an informal discussion, so I think we can have back and forth. But let us know what your thoughts are. One thing that I did want to just note, in terms of rates, I noted in an earlier slide that there's currently a differentiation of 30% difference between the city's current order rate and Fairfax Water's rate. Now, Fairfax Water's got to raise its rates over time, so would the city. So, it's not a guarantee that your rates will go down by 30%. It just has an illustration that's what the difference is today. One thing that we have noted in terms of the future of the city's water system, we have been given advice by one of the nation's foremost rate experts that we need to increase their rates if we were to stay in the water business about 30% over the coming five years. And we have a rate schedule that would allow us to do that to meet the approximately $50 million worth of capital cost that we have in our system to continue to upgrade our system. So, that's one thing, just on rates. Currently, there is a difference of 30%, but ultimately, those need to be loaded on each year by the Fairfax Water Board. But they would be uniform across all of our customers, all of Fairfax Water's customers. So, we've got two folks who've raised their hands. Let me start here, and then we'll go here to the left side.
The capital improvements that need to be made over time to either the Fairfax County water, or Fairfax Water as it exists now, or additionally with bringing in Falls Church, is the debt for those improvements serviced fully by rates? Or are there other sources of money that you have access to to cover those needed updates and maintenance?
It's just by rates. So, the customers, well, there's two things. The customers, through their commodity charge, pay for the capital improvements. There are also certain capital improvements for expansion, and those are paid for mostly by developers. Both of us have a philosophy that growth should pay for growth. And so, when, in the city's history, when developers hooked up to the city system in Tyson's Corner or anywhere in our service territory, they paid a connection fee. And sometimes those connection fees are in the millions of dollars. And that is to pay for wider pipes in the future, make sure we can get water for bigger pump stations, and those types of improvements.
And that's exactly right. So, you have the commodity rate, which pays for the normal daily operation and maintenance costs. And then, you have all these, what we call, connection fees, availability fees, and various other connection fees that new connections pay when they come into the system. Generally speaking, that, those connection fees fund most of the capital improvements programs. So, in this case, we are going to be initiating a study of how to best consolidate these systems. And out of that will come a new capital improvements program, hopefully, which will be far more efficient than the two separate capital improvement programs.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. The, as part of the negotiation, maybe I wasn't paying attention earlier, but on the transfer of the acreage up by the high school and the middle school, there's a restriction for a number of years on using that property for noneducational purposes. What was the, what's the thinking and why the restriction? How did that get, end up in the negotiation?
The boundary adjustments with the county were long and not easy. You know, the county was concerned about potential, I think, growth and density in that area. It is very close to the West Falls Church Metro Station. It is land that is, I think, suitable for dense development. Ultimately, that will be determined through our comp plan amendments and things like that. But that was the principal concern that the county had of what the impact would be on surrounding neighbors that are in the county.
So, impacts on the neighbors, not necessarily the economic, commercial growth in the county?
That may have been part of their thinking as well.
The, thank you. The, you mentioned the wastewater utility that will continue to run. There were economies, you said, between running both a clean water and a wastewater system. Have you attempted to determine the additional costs or the economies that we'll lose by just running the wastewater system?
Well, they're, running a small system is, it's easier to run a big system in terms of economies of scale. There's no question about that. We have been in the sewer business, though, for a very long time, and so, we're set up pretty well to meet our sewer obligations. We have a small crew for sewer that, we flush it and we take care of the system. That will continue on, and we think that's sustainable. When we stood up the stormwater utility, and we have additional engineering capacity for stormwater, we have additional operation and maintenance capacity for stormwater, those staff are going to be shared equally between the sewer and the stormwater. So, I think both will benefit from it. And we were able to lower what the stormwater costs were going to be by knowing that we could share that with the sanitary side.
Thank you. One last one, then, if you don't mind. In addition to the 54 FTEs that we're running the water system, my guess is there were some shared costs that were charged to the water system for your time and others on the city side, which now won't be covered. Have you made an attempt to quantify what that, what those would be?
Yeah, that's approximately $1 million a year of a portion of my salary, John Foster's salary, HR, IT, finance, all the sort of the basic support functions that the city provides for the water utility and is compensated by the water utility. That money will no longer come, and that's about $1 million a year. So, that will be an issue that we will need to work through in our annual budget process. And it's significant. In terms of the council's deliberations about this transaction throughout the con, that was always something that we knew we would have to wrestle with.
Do you see that as sort of a dollar-for-dollar cost, dollar-for-dollar expense then on the general fund?
Well, we will go through an efficiency study, you know, as we go through this, to make certain changes on our administrative costs. But there won't be many savings because a lot of these charges are for things that you can't really downsize. Our finance department, as an example, making it smaller, it's already so small that we, you know, we have concerns about segregation of duties and sort of normal things that you need for the smooth operation of a finance department. Our HR department has three people, while we don't envision that getting much smaller. So, there will be challenges in actually finding a dollar-for-dollar savings without the water system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Jerry.
I'm a likely no voter. For the primary reason is that I'm reluctant to be enthusiastic in dealing with a wealthy, heavily lawyered party because we are relatively so weak in dealing with them. And as the, one of the slides showed, they've been, they've been working on this since they were incorporated in the late 50s. So, I just have a couple of questions. One, how transparent is the treatment of what would be our former employees once they get out there into the county system? I do a lot of labor relations, and I know how easily those things are to slip out of and find reasons to, particularly in a non-union setting. And then, I wondered why it wasn't easy for the county to include the higher education buildings that are on properties that already belong to the city? I have a couple of other questions, but that'll do.
Well, in terms of the employees and how they will be treated, this is a really important issue. And I can say, through our interaction with Fairfax Water, my personal view is that Fairfax Water has taken the mission of incorporating our employees in a fair and equitable way to, they've taken that mission very seriously. As an example of that is the pension portability. That's a really important issue for employees because if you're in a defined benefit pension and your benefit stops and you start fresh with a new system, there is a financial cost to that to the employee. And Fairfax Water has worked with us to make that pension be portable in a way that is affordable in terms of the city, because there will be funds that will go from the pension fund to Fairfax Water to make that happen. But ultimately, I think it's a good deal for the city, and it's a good deal for the employees. And so, that's just one, I think, important example of Fairfax Water's approach on the whole issue. We've had a normal, you know, as Chuck mentioned, they have met with every employee of the city. They've talked about what their job description is going to be. They've really given a lot of thought to it. And so, I believe it's going to be a very effective transition. We will continue to monitor it, and we'll want to make sure that even after the closing date, that it's an effective transition because it's been a key, important issue for us all the way through. What was your second question again? The boundary adjustment? Let me key up the map on that, just so we know what we're talking about. The, Mr. Barrett is referring to the UVA and Virginia Tech Center. So, why isn't the boundary encompassing that as well? The city owns this property. It's under lease to UVA and Virginia Tech. UVA and Virginia Tech have an option to purchase this at the end of that lease period, which will expire in about 20 years now, just over 20 years. And so, I will note that that was part of the discussions for a boundary adjustment. It was a negotiation, and it ultimately is not part of the boundary adjustment. This is locked up for public education uses for the term of that lease. And again, those parties have the option to purchase for $3 million that property at the end of that lease. At that price, I think it's fairly likely to say that they will purchase it, not to prejudge it. But, so that land, its future really is pretty well set under those lease terms.
Wait, can I address a question?
Yes, sir.
Fairfax Water serves, as I said, almost a million people in Fairfax County. We do that with 384 employees today. Now, that's a ratio of employees to customers that you won't see anywhere else in the water utility business. It's incredibly efficient. How do we do that? It's a business strategy. We do it by hiring the best and treating them well. And we treat them well with salary and with benefits and with opportunity. We train them. We give them opportunity for growth. Our employees love working for Fairfax Water. Ask any of them. It would be insane for us to take the employees of Falls Church City and treat them any differently. It's important to the success of this transition that we bring these people in. We know these people. We know how good they are, and we want them to be happy in our organization. We're going to guarantee they are.
Mr. Barrett.
If you follow this thing for the last five years, there's been a lot of aggressive behavior demonstrated. And now that we're all smiley faces, I'm just wondering whether at any point in negotiations, and I mean, after the, after you were told to allow the judge to mediate it, I wonder if there's been any apologies for inappropriate, aggressive, mean-spirited behavior by either side? I always find that, and I've engaged in a lot of mediated settlements, and it's always a good idea to have some apologies, explanations, et cetera, at the end of that so that a relationship, because there's a continuing relationship between the two entities. I wonder whether anybody's really made an effort to smooth that out because I, particularly when there's an uneven power on both sides in negotiations that I've been in, it's really appropriate to try to smooth that out so that people can live together as neighbors.
Couple of thoughts that I have. One, we are a public service-oriented organization. So, our, throughout the entire history of the, maybe the past six years, to take that bracket of time, our focus has really been on serving our customers. And I think that's true for both parties. Operationally, what that's meant is that whenever I've needed to pick up the phone to call Chuck to say, you know, "Operationally, we need your help on something," or "We're working on a plan for doing something," that phone call is always immediately returned, and we always had very effective operational relationships. And I think that was up and down the organization. And so, in terms of your question, my sense is that throughout this process... And so in terms of your question, my sense is that throughout this process, you know, we worked together through COG, we worked through, together through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission on the Water Supply Plan, on future emergency response. There was always effective operational work happening between our two organizations. We've always worked that way together. And so I have not felt that there is a major reconciliation required through this, at the, you know, through the negotiation process. We were both looking out for the best interests of their customers, for us, for our taxpayers, and our customers. And we did it in a very straightforward way, and I think it's been effective. But Mr. Snyder, and Chuck, you may want to speak to it as well.
Yeah, is the mic working? Can everyone hear me? Let me address that from an elected official's standpoint. Over the course of the very difficult five years, Jerry, that you mentioned, we continued to cooperate well with our colleagues, but there was friction there that I was not used to. And I mean, working with our colleagues in Fairfax County on a whole variety of regional issues, transportation or otherwise, but there was definitely friction. I can tell you now that the potential settlement of this, if agreed to, will further improve that and will help us, I think, move forward on what I hope will be a very positive agenda of dealing with regional issues, everything from traffic to joint development to the establishment of the Civil Rights Center at Tenner Hill. I mean, we do, we have a lot of issues in common with the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and I think this has been somewhat strained. I think fundamental cooperation continued, but it was a strained relationship. And I think with, with an agreement here, assuming that it's approved, that we'll be in a much better position to go after some joint regional issues. Second point I wanted to make was in regard to any costs, I think Jeff Tarbert asked about those. I mean, we're going to be looking at those costs and seeing where we can get efficiencies and working through a budget process we hope that will result in a win-win. But we realize there are certain obligations we're going to have to go forward, and we'll try to minimize those. Third point I wanted to make, and I wanted to maybe call up John Foster. I really haven't sort of warned him about this, but a key issue here is the litigation and what, basically, the box that we're in due to both decisions made by the courts that we tried to appeal and the decision made by the Army Corps of Engineers. And I wondered if, as well, if you could not only tell us about the status of that, but tell us about the potential liabilities on the city going forward if this agreement doesn't occur in the circumstances in which we are as a result of litigation and decisions made by the Army Corps of Engineers. I think that would be very helpful for the citizens to know.
As the vice mayor indicated, I'm the city attorney for Falls Church. My name is John Foster. I'll first respond to the points that the vice mayor raised, and then I do want to circle back Jerry and add some things with respect to the negotiation in response to your question. Let me just say at the outset that, you know, to the extent that I get into not stating facts, but, you know, getting into more of an advocacy position, I'm speaking as an individual, I'm not stating the official position of the city, and I think it's important to draw that distinction. So to respond to Vice Mayor Snyder's questions, there are really two limitations, significant limitations, on the operation of the city's water system going forward. The first is based on a decision by Fairfax County Circuit Court Judge Terrence Nay in early 2010 whereby he ruled that the city's practice of earning or taking a return on investment from the system of about $2.4 million a year was unconstitutional. It was an unconstitutional tax under his ruling on county residents who do not have a vote for city council members, but nonetheless are customers of our system. We appealed that to the Supreme Court of Virginia. Supreme Court of Virginia upheld Judge Nay's ruling. So that is the current state of affairs and really will be the state of affairs with respect to our system going forward. We cannot earn money on it. We have to operate it at cost. The second point is that in 2012, we were going through the process of holding an auction to possibly sell the system to an investor-owned utility. We'd initially gotten a formal written opinion from the Army Corps of Engineers, General Counsel's office stating that we could do that under federal law. At the 11th hour shortly prior to that auction taking place, the Army Corps reversed themselves and said that we could not sell our water system to an investor-owned utility. Effectively, what that has resulted in is we have a market of one buyer, and that is Fairfax Water. Now, having said all that, and this is where I want to go into the negotiation part of it. Jerry asked, I think your question was essentially, were there any apologies offered in the course of that negotiation? There were not express apologies offered, but I was there at multiple negotiation sessions, including before the federal magistrate Judge Teresa Buchanan. And I can tell you that everybody worked very cooperatively to get this to a point where we can tell our citizens that this is a good deal. And let me just walk through those terms that I think, you know, we were able to obtain for the city. One of our first goals in going to the negotiation was to obtain fair market value price for the system. We were able to do that, $40 million, and that was based on an appraisal by SAIC, internationally recognized group that does utility appraisals. The second goal going in was to obtain a boundary adjustment. We were able to do that. I can tell you that going into the negotiation at the outset, Fairfax Water did not want any non-school use at all of this part of the boundary adjustment. Through a mutually respectful negotiation with a lot of give and take, we were able to get an agreement whereby about 11 acres of this land can be used immediately for any use that we determine that we want to put it to, based on city input and school input. One possible use that could come out of that is redevelopment. And, you know, all of you know, many former city officials who are here, with that redevelopment would be a significant annual tax revenue if it's put to a commercial, commercial use. That'll again be part of the, you know, public discussion. And so the third significant goal that we went into the negotiation with was protecting city employees, and we were also able to do that with a three-year guarantee of employment from Fairfax Water. So I hope I've answered the question. Mr. Snyder, did you have any other questions? Liabilities going forward. Thank you. If we were to retain the system, okay, we have to continue to operate it. If we were to continue to operate the system, there are at least two significant challenge, potential challenges going forward. The first is, as some of you may have read in the local media, there was a, and it is a county ordinance that was adopted by Fairfax County that purported to do two things. It first declared really all of Fairfax County to be the exclusive service area for Fairfax Water. The second thing it did was it said that we could charge a water rate for our customers no higher than the rate charged by Fairfax Water unless we got the approval of Fairfax County. And so the practical effect of the first thing with the service area is that we will not be able to expand our system. The bottom-line result is if that litigation goes forward, if we're not able to resolve this through a sale of the system, the, there is a potential that we would have to sell water at the Fairfax Water rate, which is why it mentioned earlier, currently is about 30 percent lower than what we sell water for. So we would be selling water at a negative. And that negative cost would be balanced on the backs of city taxpayers. Okay? Again, a significant expense. The other liability going forward is that, you know, if we had some catastrophic failure of the system, you know, God forbid there was a blowout or, you know, a terrorist attack, the city itself would be responsible for fixing that. Again, that obligation would fall on the backs of city taxpayers. And so, you know, for all those reasons, after this negotiation, we were able to obtain the three points going in that were crucial to the city's interests: fair market value, boundary adjustment with commercial development, and employee protections. It was my recommendation to the city council, as well as the rest of the legal team, that they go ahead and accept those terms. They voted to do that, and now it's going before the citizens in November. Yes, Carol?
Follow-up question to your statement about the boundary adjustment. Fairfax Water was against the boundary adjustment involving the Gordon Road area. I can see why the county board would object, but why did the county, why did the water authority object?
If I said Fairfax Water, I misspoke. It was Fairfax County alone that had some concerns. And to be clear, Carol, it was not anything with respect to the Gordon Road parcels. We could develop all of the Gordon Road parcels the day after the sale closes with 100 percent commercial development if we wanted to. There's no restriction whatsoever on that. But with respect to the, what I call the, we call the school parcels, as I mentioned earlier, Fairfax County proper did have some concerns about not having any school restriction as Wyatt had articulated. Again, through a lot of give and take, we were able to obtain the ability to develop 11 acres of it immediately.
Has everybody else had a chance? Okay, thank you. I'm Phil Duncan. I'm on the city council, but speaking just as an individual. Jerry, I think your question is a good one, and it is one that we hear. Trying to come up with an elevator speech answer leads me to ask people to consider that beyond the immediate aspects of the settlement, the cash and so forth, the long-term benefits to the city are, there's a peace dividend and there's a development dividend. And to try to focus folks on the fact that we are a lot smaller than Fairfax County, and it would behoove us to have good relations going forward across the whole range of issues that we deal with among social services, health services, transportation, Vice Mayor Snyder mentioned. There is benefit and goodwill between the political entities on all those issues, and I think this agreement will help foster that. Second, the development dividend, and this one, I think, is a little harder because, except for the Gordon Road area, which is not now commercially developed, but rather used for public purposes, and for the schools, Mason and Henderson, which are obviously schools, it's not sort of in the mindset of city residents to think of these as revenue-producing properties. But yet, they are. I mean, they have the potential to be. And through the agreement, the acreage that is allowed to be developed is substantially larger than, I think, any other single development proposal that's come forward in recent years. So as we go forward, I hope we'll have some more conversation about the development potential and the revenue that would come from those developments, because we do need to offset, as Wyatt said, administrative costs that have been covered by the water fund up to now. Otherwise, there's a million-dollar hole that, you know, isn't filled. But the revenue potential from these properties would more than meet that if we did our job the right way.
All right. Well, I appreciate everybody coming this morning. I want to thank John Foster. John Foster's been really critical to this process from the beginning of, throughout the negotiations, and I want to thank him for that. Thank you all for coming out on a beautiful Saturday morning. Chuck, thank you for being here, and Jeannie. And we will place this video on the city's webpage so people can see it. It'll be a resource for the community as it considers how it plans to vote on November 5th. And I would just want to thank everybody for coming out, and again, thank our folks at Public Access Television for being here and taking this meeting. Have a good, have a good weekend. Thank you.